The fourth meeting of the 23rd Council will please come to order. All council members are present this evening. Counselor Benton will be a few minutes late. At this time, we will have a moment of silence, followed by the Pledge of Allegiance, which will be led by Counselor Gibson. Thank you, Counselor Gibson. Civic plaza parking passes are provided for members of the public. You can obtain a parking pass from the council staff at the sign-up table. The council will take a dinner break at approximately 7:00 PM this evening. We want tonight's proceedings to be as civil and respectful as possible. Please do not make any personal attacks, and please no applause or outbursts during the meeting. The meeting will go a lot smoother if we are respectful of one another. We are now under Item Three, which is Proclamations and Presentations. And the first proclamation will be read by Counselor Borrego. And this proclamation is recognizing Martin Luther King Jr. Day. We have Leonard Waits, James Lewis, Marjorie Germain, and Clarence Smith, who are here to receive the proclamation this evening.
And also Mr. Chair Diane Morning Brown.
Welcome, everyone. Counselor Borrego.
Good evening, everyone. I'd like to recognize Dr. -- I'm sorry, Leonard Waits and Diane Morning Brown, who are here from the Martin Luther King State Office. And Mr. Waits is the Executive Director, and Ms. Morning Brown is the Associate Director. So, we are honored to have you all here tonight.
Thank you.
And I know there were some other folks that said that they could -- would be here, but they couldn't get here on time because of work responsibilities. But this weekend, we had a really nice observance of Dr. Martin Luther King Day. And also, there was a breakfast on Monday for the 50th anniversary of his passing. And I had the honor of walking with the group. And I have to say that I had a leg cramp at about 3:00. I think I wore the wrong shoes. But it was really quite an honor to be part of that celebration. So, with that, I am going to read a proclamation that I have, that all of the councilors have signed. And it reads, "Whereas in 1983, President Ronald Reagan signed a bill into law providing for the third Monday of January to be observed as Dr. Martin Luther King Jr. Day, honoring one of America's most admired civil rights leaders, Dr. Martin Luther King Jr., and whereas Dr. Martin Luther King Jr. devoted his life to advancing equality, social justice, and opportunity for all, and challenged all Americans to participate in the never-ending work of building a more perfect union; and whereas Dr. King's peaceful assemblies, passionate speeches, and nonviolent protests demonstrated his vision of a nation built on a foundation of equality for all, encouraging a day of interracial and intercultural cooperation and sharing; and whereas on August 28, 1963, Dr. King delivered his famous 'I Have a Dream' speech, inspiring hope and justice in the hearts of all people across the nation and around the world; and whereas the Dr. Martin Luther King Jr. Holiday brings so many people together from different cultural backgrounds, in such a vibrant spirit of brother and sisterhood, encouraging us all to work harder and for a better tomorrow; and whereas we honor Dr. King's values of love, harmony, equality, and social justice in Albuquerque through celebrating diversity daily in our community; and whereas April 4, 2018, will mark the 50th anniversary of Dr. Martin Luther King's assassination; and in many ways, our nation is still striving to reach the goals of Dr. King's dream of racial equality, economic justice, and peace; and whereas, as we join the nation in celebrating the life and legacy of Dr. Martin Luther King Jr., we also honor his memory by reaffirming our dedication to upholding his dream for all of America. Be it proclaimed by the council, the governing body of the City of Albuquerque, hereby honors January 15, 2018, as Dr. Martin Luther King Jr. National Holiday, and encourages the spirit of equality." And I would like to present this proclamation to you. And, Mr. Chair, do you have any?
I'd like to make just a couple of comments. It's so hard to believe that it'll be 50 years that Dr. King lost his life, but what an inspiration he has been to so many of us. And we, as individuals, must keep that torch alive and continue to work on that dream. And I want to thank you for all of your work in advocating for equal rights in our community and civil rights in our community and across this country, because together, we will continue to make a difference. And we'd like you to comment and make a couple of -- say a couple of words if you'd like.
Thank you very much. It has been my honor to serve on the staff. And fortunately, it's Leonard and I, and that's all the staff that we have. And it's -- can be a lot of work, but it's passionate work from the heart and work that we love to do. And we are so grateful for all of you that came out. I know Ms. Borrego came, as well as Mr. Davis, so we're very pleased about that. And Brad. Thank you, sir.
Mr. Waits, do you want to make a couple of comments?
I think she said it all. She's my great right arm, so she does a very good job with that. But again, I'd like to thank you all for coming out and participating. We do have the indoor track meet this coming weekend, and I'm inviting everyone out for that. It's a brainchild of Brad Winters, and I expect a great event this weekend, too. So, thank you again.
And that will be located where?
At the Convention Center, the indoor track meet.
And the time?
The time. Friday night, Friday, we're starting the universities. We have currently 36 universities registered for that event. As of today, we had 184 kids and adults registered for the track meet on Saturday. So, that's the 19th and 20th, Friday and Saturday.
Thank you. We'd like you to come up and receive the proclamation.
Thank you.
And I'd like to thank Elaine Romero, Counselor Sanchez's assistant, for writing this up for us.
The next item on the agenda is a presentation from the Vacant and Abandoned Housing Task Force. Jackie Fishman and Consensus Planning will present a report from the task force, and I'd like to turn this over to Counselor Gibson.
Yes, thank you, Mr. President. So, it was before this council, several months ago, where we passed a resolution recognizing the damage that is done to our communities, our neighborhoods, by way of vacant and abandoned troubled properties. So, we -- that resolution created a task force, and it was staffed by representation from the mayor's office, council office, Safe City Strike Force, I'm going to forget somebody, and Jackie Fishman. Oh, and there were three folks from neighborhoods, two people from neighborhoods. And of course, Ms. Fishman from Consensus Planning. And so, I'm just not going to use up any more time. Just turn this over to Jackie, so she can give us a summary, so.
Counselor Gibson, before we turn it over to Jackie, I think Council Vice President Harris has a question or a comment.
Sure.
Just one quick comment. And this, just to clarify, this is about vacant and dilapidated residential buildings.
Yes.
Counselor Davis and I also have a bill that we passed, an ordinance regarding dilapidated commercial buildings, and it just applies in District Nine and District Six, because we -- the challenges that we have regarding dilapidated buildings in East Central, in particular, that area. So, just a little clarification.
Absolutely.
Because I talked to Mr. Campbell, the new director, and he was saying, "Oh, we're going to have a presentation on that," but it's actually just the residential piece, not the commercial piece. Commercial piece is another problem. But anyway, sorry to interrupt.
That's okay. This is -- pardon me, typically within our neighborhoods. And also, I remembered, we did also have Nick Bullock from City Legal sitting in on this. And every -- it sounds like it was a very high-functioning task force, so thank you, Jackie.
Thank you. Okay. Thank you, Mr. President, councilors. Of course, my name is Jackie Fishman. I'm a principal with Consensus Planning, and I've been working with the task force since October to come up with this report that you should all now have a copy of. I appreciate this opportunity. Thank you, Counselor Gibson, for sponsoring this legislation. It's been a great group to work with, and I'll name each of the members of the task force. Nicole Taylor and Jeff Hertz from Council Services, Angelo Metzger from Safe City Strike Force, Nick Bullock from City Legal, Rebecca Valeride from Family and Community Services, Andy Laba from the mayor's office, Roy Apprentice from Mark Twain Neighborhood Association, and Darcy Bushnell from Alvarado Neighborhood Association. My role on the task force was to provide technical research and assistance, and put all the various pieces of our research into readable document that you have before you today. Again, the task force started meeting on October 25. We've had a total of eight meetings since then. We worked on a series of recommendations, which are summarized in the report, starting on page three. A little bit of background first. The city estimates there are currently 1,200 to 1,300 residential properties that are vacant, abandoned, and/or substandard across the city. And there's a few neighborhoods that have more concentration of those structures than others, but they're spread throughout. Many of these are listed on the vacant building registry, and many of them aren't. Our challenge as a community include the enforcement of minimum health and safety standards and requirements for these properties, the staff and resources needed to monitor the properties through enforcement activities, and the negative impact on property values and the blighting influence dilapidated properties have on our neighborhoods. The task force was asked to explore options and available tools for addressing these issues, and I'm going to try to briefly go through them. We -- our recommendations are categorized in four categories, including legislative recommendations, administrative recommendations, enforcement recommendations, and technology improvement recommendations. We have six legislative recommendations, and again, I'll briefly summarize. First, establishing a land bank for acquisition and disposition of vacant and abandoned properties, revising the housing code from criminal penalties to civil penalties to speed up that process, amending the complaint system to allow for a hotline and a website for reporting violations, exploring legislative options at the state level for extending the statute of limitations for collection of municipal liens, which currently go away after four years, exploring legislative options to allow receivership status or appointment of a conservator for a problem property, and lastly, adding new definitions to the Uniform Housing Code, which hasn't been updated in decades. So, those were the legislative recommendations. We also have the administrative recommendations, which are summarized as follows. Implementing a substandard property registry and quarinating it with the vacant building registry. Establishing a progressive fee for registration of vacant and abandoned buildings, or houses, I'm sorry, to recover enforcement costs. Redirecting code enforcement fees from the general fund to the code enforcement division. Waiving fees after one year if the owner or responsible party demonstrates that they're maintaining and securing the property. Focusing code enforcement in the neighborhoods and districts with the most problem properties. And again, we have some maps in the report that shows where those properties are, and you can see where they're concentrated. Working with ONC to provide resources, support, and training to neighborhood associations on notification procedures of these problem properties. Increasing partnerships and coordination between agencies, departments, neighborhood groups, and nonprofits on these issues. And then, coordination between ONC and Neighborhood Watch Program on conducting neighborhood sweeps to identify problem properties. Our enforcement recommendations, we have seven of those, include adopting a policy that prohibits building permits or business registrations being issued with properties with outstanding city liens, requiring an owner or responsible party of vacant property to maintain liability insurance, requiring owner or responsible party to create a detailed property plan that includes a timeline for maintaining, rehabbing, reoccupying, or demolishing that property, imposing civil penalties for the costs imposed on the city due to increased public safety and building inspection actions, and collaborating with the county on problem properties with delinquent taxes to force transfer of ownership. Lastly, we have three technology improvement recommendations. Those include creating and maintaining an online map of problem properties that would be available to neighborhood associations upon request, expanding the planning department's software tracking system, so the public can go online and view the status of those properties. And then, lastly, considering allowing the vacant building registry to be managed by a third party if the city doesn't want to do it itself. We also, in the report, go into some detail on a recommendation for establishing a land bank. We've had conversations with the Center for Community Progress, which is a national nonprofit group that provides technical assistance to communities that are interested in establishing a land bank. The center estimates over 170 land banks operating throughout the country. And the EPA actually provides a good description of land banks, if you're not familiar, and I'm quoting, "The essential function of a land bank is the ability to streamline tax foreclosure proceedings and clear title to property that reverted to public ownership. This function allows communities to plan for the reuse of properties that previously were difficult to acquire and redevelop, and to protect neighborhoods from the blight and decline often associated with tax-foreclosed properties." Our report summarizes several of the larger land banks, but also includes a summary of the City of Las Cruces land bank legislation, which went to their city council last night for adoption. So, there are examples in New Mexico, City of Las Cruces, Village of Riosso, Santa Fe County. My office worked with a -- on establishing a land bank for TDR program. So, there are other communities in New Mexico that have land banks. And the City of Las Cruces legislation is included in the report in Appendix F, if you're interested in going through that. Again, if our -- if the city is interested in pursuing this important tool, we would recommend that you bring in the Center for Community Progress and have them do an analysis of our specific conditions in Albuquerque, so that they could help design a program that works for us and not just the national model. The report also describes the establishment of a land bank advisory board that would help identify and acquire these kind of properties. And then, we also include a list of potential funding sources to keep the land bank alive. With that, the entire task force stands ready for questions. Thank you.
Are there any questions for Ms. Fishman? Counselor Harris?
Thanks. And I don't know if I have any questions, just some comments. I did go to the recent Municipal League Conference, and they talked about some cities where they have, you know, much worse problems than us. I mean, Baltimore, Maryland is now a city actually the same size as us in terms of its population, but it used to have a lot more people, and they have like a half a million empty homes in Baltimore. And I think a land bank is more appropriate in a place like that, where they actually have too much land, and they don't really know what to do with it after they start removing these properties. I think that one thing we need to do is, as we're going through the dilapidated building ordinance that we recently passed, that learned that one thing that we have in the City of Albuquerque is our liens. When we foreclose on a lien, it just goes into the general fund. And so, there's no real incentive from the planning department to work these liens. When they run out of money to work the liens, they've run out of money. And they are done with plywood, they're done with plywood, and if they have the city attorney's busy. So, if we actually change our statute, so the liens go into a separate pool of money, and it's used by the planning department, and it can be replenished, I think that might help us. And I just think, if I were in a state legislature, I wouldn't extend the statute of limitations. Four years is enough. We should be banging these things out and selling these things. And we need to fire a bunch of owners out there. We need to just get after it. So, those are sort of my comments. If you want to respond, go ahead. But I'd like to see more sort of enforcement.
Okay. And President Sanchez, Counselor Harris, we do have a variety, as I tried to explain, of recommendations, from, you know, smaller, more administrative recommendations to the larger recommendations, like the land bank. But the land bank recommendation, there are examples of much smaller land banks with a limited amount of inventory. I think the City of Fort Collins, for instance, is a small land bank that probably only deals with, I don't know, maybe 10 properties a year. So, all the way to the ones in New York, and Maryland, and Illinois, a lot of the Rust Belt states that have thousands of properties in their land banks. I think we recognize that we probably take a much more modest approach.
Counselor Penya.
Thank you, Mr. President. Just a couple of questions. You know, I look at this, and it's all interesting stuff. I know it's an issue in our city, and I -- unless I miss something, I look at it from like an enforcement kind of perspective. Did you look in terms of anything, you know, because there's a lot of homeowners that have these houses, had them forever, just don't have the resources to fix them, and they just started to start deteriorating more and more. So, did you -- have you looked, or is there anywhere where, you know, grant opportunities, low-interest loans to help people fix up their houses, rather than just kind of how we?
Counselor, I agree with you. I think that's -- the task force didn't get into that side of things, but there are grants and loan programs that are available. Those monies get eaten up pretty quickly at the state level. The home funds that are administered through the MFA is one source for grants for fixing up homes. So, our goal isn't to, you know, kick people out of their homes because they're falling apart. That's not at all the issue.
Right, Mr. President. Thank you. Yeah, and I'm not suggesting that, but it does -- reading it, it does seem like it comes from an enforcement. So, I was wondering if, you know, is the task force completed, or is there any way to kind of amend this, to have those kind of options in there available as well, you know, so that homeowners know that they have, you know, other than just losing their house because they don't have the resources to fix it, that they have, you know, these resources available to them? I don't know the answer to that question.
Counselor Gibson.
I absolutely agree with Counselor Penya that, you know, the city, as much as possible, should be helping people with repairs, particularly people who are unable to winterize their homes, for example, or do things like that. But this particular -- the scope of this was really intended for houses that have been abandoned, or, you know, vacated for some reason, and that attract, you know, activities that are not legal, or, you know, that bring down the neighborhood. But I absolutely agree with you, and I would hope that during budget, we can do more. It sounds like, and I haven't read this yet, I just got a copy today, but it sounds like there's quite a bit here, including the enforcement recommendations, but things like legislative recommendations and administrative recommendations that we might be able to look at with a little more detail. In fact, I -- it was some discussion on the task force that you all might be willing to continue for a while longer to maybe help better define those particular recommendations. Is that correct, Ms. Fishman?
Yes, Counselor Gibson. The task force all has agreed that this is the beginning of the recommendations. There's a lot of -- a lot more research that would have to be done, and that the group feels pretty strongly that they're willing to keep meeting and working on this issue.
Okay. That's good to hear. I thought, just personally, I'd really like to extend my thanks to everyone who worked so hard on this and gave of your time and your knowledge and putting energy into this. It looks like a great report, and I'm really looking forward to digging in deeper, so thank you.
Thank you.
Counselor Borrego, then Counselor Benton, then we'll go back to Counselor Penya.
Whoops, my microphone just fell apart. My question is, in District Five, it seems like there are some properties that probably are identified in Paradise Hills, which is in the county. And I was wondering if there's anyone on the task force from the county?
No.
Being represented, or is there coordination?
Counselor Borrego, there is no one from the county on the task force.
So, how, I mean, would they need to buy into this if this were enacted? I mean, because it says here, outside of Intana Ranch and Paradise Hills, and I'm assuming that you mean Paradise Hills in the county? Because I happen to know that there are a lot of properties in there that are in disrepair.
I'm looking for Angelo for some help there. I don't think the--
And you can get back to me if you don't have the answer.
I don't think the intent was to identify county properties, so if--
So, it's only the portion of Paradise Hills that's in the city?
Yes, that's correct.
Okay.
Counselor Benton.
Thank you, Mr. President. Well, I've puzzled and worried over numerous tear downs in my district of houses that were structurally sound, historically important, but had been nuisances and remain nuisances to the point where I personally-- remain nuisances to the point where I personally felt like I, I had to give up and stop fighting and they were torn down. And that's heartbreaking in a sense as an architect and a person who, who loves to, to see our cultural history and our architectural history preserved. And, and on top of that, just the, the sheer energy that goes into building a house, even, even if it's now become a nuisance, the original energy that went into that versus, and rehabilitating it would be, would be the best course of action. But we have had problems with our city rehabilitation programs and I've struggled with that over the years as well. And I think we need to keep our eye on the ball with regard to our options with regard to helping people keep their houses, if not completely up to modern code, because that's, that's an unrealistic expectation, but, but up to a safe and, and energy, reasonably energy efficient state where people can continue to use them. But a lot more work to be, be done on that. But I really appreciate this report and the work of the task force and, and I stand ready to continue to, to work with you guys and, and anyone who's interested in the issue because District Two is one of the oldest, if not the oldest, part of town. And many of these structures are worth saving and there may be a lot of effort required. And we can't put all of the limited funds we have into one or two houses. We've got to spread it in a more strategic way and try to, try to get it to be more effective to numerous homeowners, so, and, and to the, to the benefit of the neighborhood's concern. So, thanks, Mr. President.
Thank you, Counselor Gibson, then Counselor Harris, then we'll go to Counselor Penya.
Thank you. Just clarification that this resolution didn't describe or, or pick anybody from outside of the city. This is just a, a city study and, and I'm sure you haven't had a chance to look at it, unless you've read all the resolutions and ordinances passed by the council in the past several years, but, so I don't, you know, I'm joking, of course, but this is specific to the City of Albuquerque. We use city resources, city attorney's office and the city, Safe City Strike Force and the mayor's office as well as council. So we're just looking within the city. Thank you.
Counselor Harrison, Counselor Penya.
And just briefly, responding to Counselor Benton, I think if we actually use our liens a little bit differently than, than a teardown approach, we could actually board up these properties, clean up the yard and so forth. Then we have a municipal lien. We foreclose on a municipal lien and investor picks it up. So I, I think we, we might also use that and that might actually help save some of these properties rather than just doing a teardown approach, which is kind of the only tool that we know how to use in our toolbox right now.
Counselor Penya.
Thank you, Mr. President. Sorry I had to step out, so I don't know what the other conversation was about, but I just want to say that I really, you know, thanks Counselor Gibson for, for doing this. And my understanding from what I heard a minute ago is that there's an opportunity to kind of extend this study, so I'd like to do that. I'd like to, you know, offer my help in terms of accomplishing that, just to add a part in there that really does not come from the enforcement perspective, but just something about, you know, where we go and we actually reach out to, to lots of families that are out there just trying to figure out how they can possibly, you know, repair houses and do these issues that they need to have resolved. And, you know, it's kind of like when you have a house that, you know, has weeds or trash in the front, you know, when people don't have those kind of resources and aren't a fixed income and you get a citation from the city saying that, you know, you'll have to pay X amount of dollars if, to fix it up or we'll have to come out and fix it up. Sometimes people don't have the resources to do that and then it's just starts them on a downward spiral, spiral in terms of really trying to catch up. So, you know, I, I think that's important to add this to it, so thank you.
Thank you. Jackie, thank you very much for your time and for the task force's time. We are now under item four, Economic Development Discussion. We have Agnes Noonan, President, President and Juliana Silva, Managing Director of West Enterprises Center. They will present on the economic impact of West in Albuquerque and highlight a couple of the new initiatives. Welcome.
Thank you.
President Sanchez, members of the council, thank you so much for the opportunity to come before you this evening. West is a statewide nonprofit entrepreneurial services organization. We were founded nearly 30 years ago, right here in Albuquerque, by women for women. Over time, we've expanded our programs and today serve any New Mexican who wants to start or grow their own business. Our primary services are business consulting, training and lending. In 2009, we were delighted to partner with the City of Albuquerque on the construction and opening of the West Enterprise Center, which is an award-winning small business incubator right here in downtown Albuquerque. We're currently handing out a couple of information graphics for the council. One shows you some of the economic impact statistics from the work that we've done with businesses that have both graduated and are still in the West Enterprise Center. And I hope you'll find, as we do, that that's been a good investment on the part of the city. And the second is just, again, some more economic impact metrics over our work here in Albuquerque over the past five years. So what have we learned about entrepreneurs over the past 30 years? Well, we've learned a lot of things, but I'd just like to focus on a couple. One, starting a business is the easy part. Two, that business stability and growth really requires ongoing capacity building for small business owners. We have found that a particular Achilles heel for small businesses here in Albuquerque is lack of knowledge about the financial side of their business. That includes systems to help them track what is going on in their business from a financial point of view. And third, that the pace at which technology is changing really requires all of our small businesses to be in constant learning mode. So organizations like West need to continue to help small businesses incorporate technology and technology tools into their businesses. Right now, I'd like to turn over the mic to Juliana Silva, who is the Managing Director of the West Enterprise Center, and she will share briefly just a little bit of information about some new initiatives at West which seek to address some of the business and business development needs of diverse entrepreneurs throughout the city.
Thank you. Thank you, President Sanchez and council members. We're excited to be able to offer an expansion of our services in Spanish through the support of the W.K. Kellogg Foundation and some of the other supporters, who are offering the chance for us to bring on a bilingual business consultant and trainer who offers direct one-on-one consulting in Spanish. We're offering workshops in Spanish. And we're working really closely with Spanish-speaking entrepreneurs to help them do things like Agnes said, implement financial tracking systems, help them learn how to collect on their accounts receivable, so they can build strong and sustainable businesses. And building on that program, we're really excited to launch this year La Escalera, which is funded in part by the Mayor's Prize for Entrepreneurship. We're honored to be a three-year recipient of that Mayor's Prize. And this will help us work with immigrant entrepreneurs to formalize their business, implement financial tracking systems and help them access capital to scale at a level that will help them become strong and sustainable in our community. And we're really excited also to launch a program this year through the support of the Kaufman Foundation, which will allow us to go out into the communities, work directly with entrepreneurs in Badeles, the International District and the South Valley, to look at ways to understand the barriers that they're facing in starting or scaling their businesses. And really then work together with them to design the solutions that they feel that they need will help them overcome those barriers. So we're really excited to launch that program this year as well. Thank you.
So in closing, we'd just like to thank the council for its past support. And if there's one message we could leave with you, and that is to urge you to continue to support efforts that help build the business and financial capacity of existing businesses. Recall that I said starting's the easy part. So again, thank you and we're available to answer any questions.
Are there any questions from this council? Counselor Benton.
Well, thank you for coming to present and I've been a long time supporter of West. In fact, when you opened your new building, we put the green wall in there. I haven't been there lately to see if it's still green, hopefully.
It's still green. It's really green. You're all welcome to come at any time.
As long as it's not brown. But, but I had a couple of questions because you mentioned South Valley and Badeles. Badeles is, you know, a lot of things going on. There's a proposed Main Street or a, a forming Main Street in Badeles. There's also the South Valley Economic Development Center and other efforts that are going on there. I just wanted, you know, your take on how you coordinate with, with them and because it's all kind of similar effort.
Yes, absolutely. And I'm from Badeles. So we are working with Encuentro in Badeles and we're reaching out to work with the Badeles Coalition and other organizations and groups, especially in this work with the Kaufman Foundation. That program will really help us go into the neighborhoods to learn from the community. And we're working very closely with the South Valley Economic Development Center. So we have a, a two-year partnership that we've worked, been working to develop tools, assessment tools, mapping out our resources so that we can see the areas of strength and areas of gaps that we can all support each other in developing and strengthening to offer to the clients. So building those collaborations is really key for us.
Great, thank you.
Counselor Borrego.
Thank you, ladies, for coming here this evening. I want to tell you that I was actually involved in the building of your building and acquiring the land when I was working for the city. And I'm glad to see that you've been so successful.
Thank you.
My question is, well, two questions. One is, are you, do you only work in the inner-city neighborhoods or do you also reach out into other parts of the city?
West works throughout the city.
Throughout the city.
I think sometimes there's the misconception because we have the business incubator, we're only working with companies in the incubator. That represents a very small number of the businesses that we work with throughout the city.
Okay. And my next question is, could you kind of just briefly explain this chart that you handed us, please?
Yes, sorry, it's a lot of numbers.
Because it's, it's a little confusing to me, so I'd like to understand.
So this represents the impact metrics of the companies that have gone through the incubator and are currently in the incubator, starting in 2010. And so the most recent year is on top. So the first column shows the aggregated revenue generated by those companies. And then the next two columns show whether they've received a grant. So the investment is the next four columns. What types of investments have these companies received? So one company received a grant in 2010. The other companies have, have received equity and debt to finance the growth of their businesses. And so you can see by year the amount that each, or the aggregate of companies has received. And then accumulation at the bottom. And then the next three columns show the impact of employment by those companies, full-time, part-time, number of employees and the gross payroll, year by year and cumulative. And then the last column are the new jobs created by those aggregate companies.
So do you track these companies over time?
Yes, we do.
And do you also track the type of businesses that they provide to the community?
Yes, absolutely.
Okay, thank you.
Agnes, Juliana, thank you very much for your presentation.
Thank you, we so appreciate it.
Okay, let's move on to item number five, Administrative Questions and Answers. Counselors, are there any questions for the administration? Counselor Davis.
Thank you, Mr. President. And I hope, maybe Mr. Real, I know you and I were texting about it and I believe Mr. Bakhter and I had spoken about this quickly. I wanted to follow up just quickly in regard to following up on the ART discussion that we started last time. And since we've seen some of the results, we have been reviewing some questions about the electric buses that we know we've had some problems with and I know your office has met with. But in doing a review from our office, we went back and looked at the, the RFPs that were put out for the electric buses. As we'll all recall, the, the vendors, neither vendor had ever produced a bus that had done this yet. Some of them had done it in other places. But at the end of the day, the real question became, you know, can the bus company do the work and can they make the changes that will make this work for us? And in our review, I wanted to go back because this contractor, this, this, I guess it is a contract, technically was a decision of the administration because it's a capital expenditure. It didn't come to this council and so those considerations never made it this far. But in looking at our review, we found that of the two vendors, there really was a real difference in, both in terms of price and in terms of performance that the two companies were expecting. I wonder if you or Mr. Bakter, Prox and Purchasing, have had a chance to review the, the way we came to the decision about this bus company and whether it's an opportunity for us to take a look at the second qualified vendor that the city qualified, if this new company, BYD's not able to fulfill their obligations fairly quickly.
Mr. President and Counselor Davis, first and foremost, we have had our, obviously the attorneys, particularly in, at DMD and in, in the procurement office, look at the contract. And I've had a, a brief discussion with them about the, the process for securing this particular company and the process that the city, that the previous administration obviously performed. And you're right, the 60-foot electric bus is not a, this company in particular, BYD, this is their first 60-foot bus, electric bus. The other vendor as well. So you're correcting your perspective of this. We've looked at the contracts. We are actually going to be meeting with BYD and shortly to have the conversations about, about their ability to deliver on the project. Obviously, as a result of our review and, and discussions with the citizens of Albuquerque, the company has reached out and says, has assured us that they're, they want to meet and have a conversation about how they're going to meet the, the RFP requirements, et cetera. So we've had that discussion. I don't know that I can tell you today that, that the mayor or that the administration has made a decision about, about that contract in particular to, even to tell you that we'll, that we might want to look at another contractor. But I think it's important to let the public know that, that the city has a contract with a company that has not delivered and not performed. And we intend to, obviously, to work with the company to ensure that they deliver the product that the city originally proposed or contracted for. And if, and if that can't happen, then obviously we'll look at the other options and, and ensure the citizens of Albuquerque that we get the best equipment we can for this project.
Thank you, Mr. Real. I appreciate that. And Mr. President, if I can, just to follow quickly.
Go ahead.
One of the things I think that we noticed in our review in my office of both of these, and as you're doing this, I hope you can help us figure this out, is in the, the specs, obviously, we were very clear on what was required of how many hours, how much charging time we had available, how many miles they had to get out of these routes. And it stood out in particular from the BYD vendor that they specifically said, we're not, we can do 200 miles, which we now know from testing is about what we're getting. But that to get to 275, we had to add inductive charging stations at each of the transit centers on each end, which I think is new news to most of us. And to my knowledge, we haven't installed. In other words, I'm curious, in the, and I'll follow that with a second one. I'm curious as to whether in the decision-making process that led up to this as a city, whether we requested all the pieces we needed to get the job done or whether we shortchanged ourselves and how transparent that process was. I'm certain that through this council and through our finance committee that I sat on when we were looking at these questions, we never heard that there were no more equipment required and I'm not aware that we have them. I might just also point out that during that process, both vendors were qualified, but for whatever reason, the former administration picked the vendor that was $4 million more and yet performed, obviously doesn't have a bus yet. And so, you know, I wonder if we get to a place and we can't resolve that, if the administration would at least consider reviewing whether that $4 million that's been appropriated for these buses might be better used to help rectify some of the other challenges with ART as well without costing taxpayers that extra money. So I want to challenge those and hope the administration can help us look at those questions and look at those as options if BYD can't meet their obligations fairly quickly.
Mr. President, and we will, Counselor Davis, for sure. And happy to have a copy of whatever analysis you all did. You can never have too much information, so I appreciate that. I will certainly tell you that in our conversations tomorrow, we will have, there is a, a, a subject line conversation related to, to the, the range, if you will, of how far those buses can go on a charge and to determine whether or not there is a need to do something like a charging facility, maybe through the corridor. The, the real challenge, quite frankly, at the end of the day is, is that we've got to even begin to look at what, the buses we've got, right? And, and the, and the system that they've put in place already and make sure that meets the requirements. But your, your review is important to us and we'll look at that and make sure we incorporate that into our line of questioning, so I appreciate that. that into our line of questioning. So I appreciate that.
Thank you, Mr. Rial. We want it to work at the end of the day. So thank you. Thank you, Mr. President.
Counselor Bennett, and then Counsel Vice President Harris.
Thank you. Mr. Rial, I just have to say for myself, I very much appreciate the diligence of yourself and the administration in looking at these contracts and the technical aspects that we're facing right now, and also the attitude of, you know, this is a large investment already in place, and we've got to make it work. And I think, from my perspective also as a counselor, certainly, we were part of the decisions to move forward with this project. We were not directors or administrators of what was done. And, you know, hindsight's 20/20, of course. But it seemed like some things were rushed. And with any project, I just want to say, as a design and construction professional myself, any project of this magnitude is going to have a fairly lengthy, what in the industry is called a punch list period. This may go beyond that very well. But at the same time, anything of this magnitude is going to have numerous things to shake out. And when you build an ocean liner, you know, there's a shakedown cruise. You don't put everybody on it and go out and see whether it's working or not. And this is on par with that. So, and I do also want to just say that as a design professional myself, and having been on the other side of this, where now I'm representing the public, in the past, I was a much smaller-scale contractor working for the city and other public entities. You know, we're all required to have errors and emissions insurance, and every entity that worked on this project has those. If something really went wrong with any design aspect of the project, the city should be covered. And we've had those discussions, Mr. Rial, and I know that you take those serious as well, as do the firms who acquired that insurance and provided those services to the city. So we've got to give it, as a counselor, it's only fair to give time for all of that to play out. And again, at the conclusion of even a small building addition, as I used to sometimes do for the city back in the day, their issues have to be resolved at the end. Some of them are design issues, some of them are construction issues. Some of them really aren't anyone's fault, things that come up. And I'm not characterizing any of our present challenges in any one of those ways, but they could be any or all of them. So I appreciate the effort. We've got to all move forward, and also appreciate the transparency with regard to what the administration's trying to tackle right now.
Counsel Vice President Harris.
Thank you. And after meeting with the mayor and talking to him, I was concerned because in my profession, I do a lot of insolvency work, legal work, and I was concerned that there are so many mistakes in these buses that, is this company going to ever be able to perform? But it turns out that I think we're in good shape there because this is a very, very strong company. That, I guess, a 60-foot electric bus is just new to the industry. So I think, you know, maybe they're a little bit more optimistic in terms of what they could produce and how well they would perform. But it sounded like this company has every incentive and the ability to make this right. I mean, is that your understanding, Mr. Rial?
Mr. President and Counsel Harris, that's at least to this point what they've represented to us, that they intend to abide by the contract. Obviously, you know, they're late in delivery of the buses, and those that we have have challenging issues. And we will know here very shortly when we have, you know, a face-to-face conversation with their executive team about the concerns that we've already articulated to the community that you all know about, and see what kind of a remedy they have, if you will, to fix the ones we've received, and to ensure that those that are coming in are also a good quality product. I think the real issue for, aside from the delivery of the equipment, is also to ensure that the equipment does meet FTA requirements. Because we are availing ourselves as a city with federal transit administration funds to purchase those electric buses. That was part and parcel why, I believe, the city went with the electric buses in the first place is because the FTA was very interested in electric buses and offered to pay for a portion of the cost of acquiring those buses. But those buses must be, must go through a process that the FTA has, and that's called the Altoona testing. And Altoona is a community in Pennsylvania that does the testing, does Altoona testing. But it's a real important test that needs to be met in order for us to avail ourselves of the federal funds in the procurement of these buses. So that's one of the issues that we've got to work through. But at this point, Counsel Harris, their representations is that they will comply with the contract and work with the city to get us the product we ordered.
But I guess the question, one of the questions was, is it true that this is one of the largest bus manufacturers in the world? Is that your understanding?
Mr. President and Counsel Harris, my understanding is that they are an international company. They're European and Asian-based, and they do a lot of buses in many parts of the world. Whether it's the largest, I don't know that for a fact, but they are an international company.
So if they have the will to make this right, they have the financial ability to make it right?
Mr. President and Counsel Harris, I believe they do.
Okay, thank you.
Counselor Gibson, and then Counselor Borrego.
Thank you, Mr. President. I wanted to ask about the two stations that there are problems with. One was on the west side, and one was on the east side. And I drove west side of the river, east side of the river. So, and I can't remember the name on the, one of the east side of the river, but I did drive by there several times. I don't see a problem with that station. What I do see a problem with, simply, the lanes don't line up. So I think that can be fixed with paint.
So, Mr. President and Counselor Gibson, let me just say that the station itself, looking at it just as a facility, it looks fine. The challenge is that when you put the bus on the platform to service the station, the bus sits at a three or four-degree angle to the platform, which basically means that the road is not even. So it sits at an angle. If this is the platform, it sits at an angle like this, which basically means if someone in a wheelchair is trying to get into the bus, and they get on the bus, they can easily roll to the other side of the bus.
Well, that was a much different description of what we got last week.
Right. And that's one of the stations. The station on the east side is the station at Washington and Central.
Oh, that's what I'm talking about.
Okay.
I didn't go out to the west side.
The station at Washington and Central is an issue associated with the distance between the station and the actual intersection of Washington and Central. If you can picture the ART bus in the middle of the median, as it's intended to operate, the distance between the, when the light turns green for the operator to get to the station, the distance between the intersection is so narrow or so short that a 60-foot bus can't make that turn without going into the lane where vehicles that are traveling in the same direction.
They can't make, I'm not sure what turn you're talking about.
So what happens, it has to make an S-turn. It has to do this, because it's on the inside lane.
Yeah.
And it has to get to the station, which is very close. So it has to do this to get to it.
I gotcha. So again, that, when I was out there, I said, well, the lanes don't line up.
Yeah, well, that's the
You know, that's all.
That's the challenge with the whole system, Mr. President, and again, Counselor Gibson, is that the way, when you put a bus in the median, and if it's just the buses running up and down the median, it's not a problem, right? But now you have a facility in the median. So you now have to use what was normally the space of the median for the buses to go around it.
Yeah.
And that's when you have to use these, basically, that's where you have the issue, where they interfere or come into connections with the regular passengers on regular motorized vehicles. And that's the concern that we have, is once we get the station's structures, there's going to be a tremendous public campaign to educate people about the ART lanes and how the buses operate in those lanes.
Right. And we were going to have to do that anyway.
That's right.
Right? But again, the way it was described last week was that that particular station, it was going to be really difficult to fix that. It does not appear to be, to me, anyway, you know, that it's going to be that difficult if we can just make the lane line up, you know? So that the bus, as it approaches that light, it will already be in alignment with where it needs to be offset by one half of the island.
Right. Well, Mr. President and Counsel Gibson, it's not quite that simple. The real challenge in that particular site is that you have to move the entire intersection east in order to get that bus to go. So it's not an insurmountable issue. And I will tell you that on any of these stations, they're not insurmountable issues. They're issues that we can fix. And I met today with the contractors, and we went through the list of challenges that we have each in some of these stations. And there's fixes for almost all of them, and fixes that we can make. That particular one, though, is a challenge because of the way the curb cuts are on adjacent properties. If you move the station too far, or the intersection too far back, you may end up taking somebody's driveway to their business. So we've got, so that's why it makes it a little more complicated, but they're not issues that are insurmountable.
And I don't know why we'd even consider moving the intersection, or the station for that matter. I mean, the buses do have the capability to turn lights.
Sure.
Change lights. So while they are dropping off or picking up new passengers at that station, just leave the light going north and south red till they get out of the intersection.
Mr. President and Counsel Gibson, I may need to sit and show you in a diagram what the challenge is. But it suffice to say that even the engineering groups today said, let us look at that situation because the intersection isn't wide enough. It's a 60-foot bus. So it's not wide enough to have the bus make the maneuver in the intersection without getting into the other lane. So you've got to move the intersection back. But we can draw a diagram for you and explain it in a little more detail. But it's not, again, it's not a showstopper, as I would say, but it is an issue we've got to resolve. And there's a couple of stations that have that same issue. That one is more dramatic because it is at a major intersection.
Counselor Borrego.
Mr. Rial, and for the administration, I very much appreciate the efforts that you have made and that you're making in taking this issue on. I wasn't on the council when this issue came to the council, but I am now. I see two different issues. One is the issue with regard to the contract and the designers. There are radius issues that the designer should have been aware of. There are issues related to land use that should have been, you know, they should have measured these things. These things are things that I think the designer needs to be held accountable to. And if the contract was not written in such a way that they should be held accountable, then, you know, then that would be on the city. But I doubt that very highly because I worked with a lot of contracts over time. And I know that, you know, those issues were probably from a transportation issue, from a transportation standpoint, probably reviewed. But I think that, you know, somebody should have gone out there and measured the bus and the radiuses. I mean, seriously.
Please.
I mean, that's not to be facetious. It's just kind of, you know, somebody should have looked at those radiuses. In regard to the alignment of the platform, I mean, and the bus platform, I think that, I mean, I would almost say that again. The second issue is with regard to... Okay. Well, I'm sorry, but, you know, I have to bring these things up. I have a responsibility as well. With regard to the accountability, I think it's important that we discuss these issues, maybe not in so much detail that we're redesigning things, but at least so that the public is aware of the efforts that you are making. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. President, let me just say on both of those points, we will ensure, make sure that you all know and appreciate the fact that the contracts that are open with all the contractors, the architect, the engineering company, and the construction company are all open contracts, and they're what they call at-risk contracts. Point being is that we will not close those contracts until all these issues are resolved and that where the city is protected in that fashion, to include the contract with the bus company. So we've got some good contracts in place to ensure that we get what we want, and we are continuing to work with them. And at this point, all of the contractors have stepped up and said, we want to make this right, and we want to make this work for Albuquerque. So we're getting good cooperation. And so I truly believe we can get this moved in a better direction very soon.
Counselor Davis.
Thank you, Mr. President. Just very briefly, I want to move us on from that to some news that came out this afternoon, and just hopefully, perhaps Ms. Nayer or our acting city attorney can help us a little bit. A little earlier today, and I understand we have a hearing tomorrow with Judge Brack on our DOJ issues. A little earlier today, there was a news story that, covering the city's new filings, when in fact, it appears that in addition to the, I don't know what you call it, surreptitious recording of the monitor by one of our former APD officials, apparently, our former city attorney sent a letter exclusively to Judge Brack following that hearing outlining a number of other recordings by APD officials of city officials and others involved in this process. Can you give us an update on what's in the city's filing? And I realize we have a hearing tomorrow, and so that's the best venue, but certainly, this is an important topic we've covered for some time, and it would be great to have an update on that.
Sure. Counsel President Sanchez, Counselor Davis, the court, as you mentioned, is going to hear this topic tomorrow, but I can give you a brief synopsis. I don't want to get out ahead of anything that the judge may have to say on this, but I can give you sort of the short version. It's, we learned upon, a little while after we took office, that the former city attorney had filed a notice with the court in the DOJ matter that enclosed a number of recordings that had been made of conversations with the court monitor and other folks involved in the DOJ proceedings. This letter was apparently in response to a request from the judge to file any recordings of this nature after the introduction of the recordings that former Assistant Police Chief Huntsman made of a meeting with Dr. Ginger, the court monitor. Apparently, this filing was made with the court exclusively and not with the other parties. And so upon learning that this approach had been taken, we immediately informed the other parties, DOJ, APOA, made those recordings available to them, made those, we have now made those recordings available to people who have requested them through the Inspection of Public Records Act. We filed a notice with the court to just let them know that we felt that all of this should be on the record. And most importantly, we have completely discontinued the practice of surreptitious recordings that we believe was highly inappropriate.
Ms. Nayer, I just want to say thank you, Mr. President. Thanks for the courtesy there. I realize that tomorrow's hearing is a good place, and I'm certain, given, I'm pretty confident that, given the language the judge gave us last time about the one recording we seem to know about, that I expect that his words will be appropriately critical. And I realize that there are new people involved in this process from top to bottom on our side of the table. However, I think it's also concerning that, you know, there clearly, there's some other recordings and other pieces of this that seem to indicate, and we'd love to have some more information as we learn more, where it talks about routine conversations that were recorded with city officials and others, and whether that's those of us here or other elected officials or other people in this process. This is troubling, and it's still going to be a problem for us as we're trying to hit the reset button. It's problematic that we understand, it's imperative that we understand, as you all know, and I appreciate you taking a strong effort to be transparent in this. I'm not an attorney, but it concerns me that we have a one-sided conversation with one part of the court without involving others and disclosing pieces that clearly they have a right to know. And I think, quite frankly, based on our questions of APD way back when, about how many, and Ms. Hernandez, how many other recordings there were, I seem to be pretty clear in my recollection that they said there weren't any others. And perhaps there had been some for over a year. And so I hope, as we get past that process, if your office and perhaps the city attorney's office could help us understand a little better where we are with this, how many other recordings there are, how many other conversations are out there, so that we can help understand where the city might stand in regard to our reform process, let me just say, this is, thank you to y'all for being transparent and working to try to get that out there. I'm really troubled by this, after personal conversations with Ms. Hernandez and our former APD officials about exactly what had transpired. This was not in it, and this is not acceptable, one way or the other. So thanks for stepping up on this, and we look forward to hearing more.
Counsel President Sanchez and Counselor Davis, if I may also... Counsel President Sanchez and Counselor Davis, if I may also add, none of the people who have made those recordings are still employed here by the city. Former city attorney is not here, and none of the folks in APD are still part of our team. So that gives us confidence that going forward, there will not be this type of practice, and we share your concerns. This is highly disturbing. Thank you.
Are there any other questions for the administration? Counsel Gibson.
Thank you. Just one more. Director Doug Chaplin, please. Director, thank you for being here this evening. I wanted, I'll tell you, really, what I wanted to talk to you about was the remediation of Randolph. However, that is far less important than what happened last night. There was a fire, a pretty devastating fire over at Solarvia, and I just heard about it today. I understand that all of the residents had to be evacuated, and they are, or at least were today, last night, and earlier today over at Hayes Middle School Gymnasium. This population, I actually know quite a bit about this area. It's very close to my house. I've been over there several times, known people there, elderly people, disabled people, some medically fragile people. And I was just wondering if you could give us a little bit of an update. I know it's probably only been hours since you've perhaps heard the last, but I'd appreciate it.
Sure. Mr. President, Counsel Gibson, I can tell you a little bit about what I know of the situation. When I saw the media alerts out last night about 9:00, I immediately texted Mr. Baca, who's one of the principal owners of Yes Housing, and offered any assistance that we could to help with the situation. I was informed at that time that Red Cross was on the scene. I believe our department, our transit department, had gone over there to help transport those residents to the middle school. Subsequent to that conversation, you know, he seemed to think everything was under control. He said, just let me know if something changes. I was contacted this afternoon by another member of the ownership requesting assistance of moving the residents out of the school into some hotel rooms that had been rented on their behalf, I believe by the owners. And so, and again, I think our transit department, Albuquerque Ride, assisted in that transport of the residents from the school, and it's my understanding, at least as of about 2:30 this afternoon, that the residents were being transported to a motel tonight so that they would be a little bit more comfortable.
Sorry, Mr. President, may I just follow up real quick? Do you know how many residents that included? I don't recall how many units they have offhand.
Mr. President, Counsel Gibson, I've seen a range in the media. I'm going to, I don't know if I want to add to that. It's around 65 to 75. I heard as high as 100, but more recently, I've seen somewhere between 65 and 75 residents, but that's based on media reports.
And I think they haven't been filling any vacancies, getting ready. The good part of this, if there is a good part of a really tragic fire, is that Yes Housing was going to be rehabilitated, you know, redone, badly, badly needed, and they were in the planning stages of, and maybe the planning was already done, of relocating people anyway for a period of time until all the work could be done. But I'm really concerned about this, you know, these folks, because some of them really are medically fragile, and sleeping at night on the floor of a gym with a mat, maybe a couple of blankets, pretty much on their own, just, you know, really frightens me, scares me. So I hope, I hope we can do whatever we can do to relieve any pain and suffering there.
Mr. President, Counsel Gibson, the offer to extend help to that ownership structure and to those folks is still there, and it's on the table. And Mr. Baca knows how to get a hold of me at any time, night or day, and, you know, we'll do whatever we're capable of doing to help ease the situation that those folks are in because it's really unfortunate for them.
Thank you. I appreciate that. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Chapman. We are now under Item Six, the Journal. Counsel Vice President Harris.
Thank you, Mr. President. I move approval of the, what was the date?
January 3rd.
January 3rd, Journal.
We have a motion and a second to approve the January 3rd Journal. Any questions? See none. All those in favor signify by saying yes.
Yes.
Yes. Oppose, say no. That carries unanimously. We are now under Item Seven, Communications and Introductions. Are there any changes to the letter of introduction? Counsel Davis.
Mr. President, I move that the rules be suspended for the purpose of pulling EC-483 out of the Finance and Government Operations Committee and placing it on tonight's agenda for final action. EC-483 is approval of a first supplemental agreement with Triple-H Solar LLC. This item was already considered in the Finance Committee, but we neglected to do immediate action on it, and that's required to continue some other projects in the city.
We have a motion and a second. We have a motion and a second by Counsel Jones. Any questions? See none. All those in favor signify by saying yes.
Yes.
Yes. Oppose, say no. That carries unanimously. I move that the rules be suspended for the purpose of pulling EC-9 out of the Land Use Planning and Zoning Committee and placing it on tonight's agenda for final action. EC-9 is the mayor's appointment of Jolene Wuffley to the Zoning Board of Appeals.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Any questions? See none. All those in favor signify by saying yes.
Yes.
Yes. Oppose, say no. That carries unanimously. I move that the rules be suspended for the purpose of placing EC-11 on tonight's agenda for final action. EC-11 is the mayor's appointment of Timothy Waters to the Zoning Board of Appeals.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Any questions? See none. All those in favor signify by saying yes.
Yes.
Yes. Oppose, say no. That carries unanimously. I move that the rules be suspended for the purpose of placing EC-12 on tonight's agenda for final action. EC-12 is the mayor's appointment of Robert Rayner to the Zoning Board of Appeals.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Any questions? See none. All those in favor signify by saying yes.
Yes.
Yes. Oppose, say no. That carries unanimously. Counsel Harris.
I move approval of the letter of introduction.
We have a motion and a second for the approval of the letter of introduction. Any questions? See none. All those in favor signify by saying yes.
Yes.
All opposed, say no. That carries unanimously. We are now under Item Eight, which is Reports of Committees. Counsel Peña.
Thank you, Mr. President. The Finance and Government Operations Committee met on Monday, January 8th, 2018, and reports out the following items. In the matter of EC-481, 482, 485, and eight, that receipt be noted. In the matter of EC-483, that it be approved. In the matter of R-256, that it do pass as amended and be acted on at the meeting which it is reported. In the matter of R-259, that it do pass as amended, I make a motion to accept the committee report.
We have a motion and a second to accept the committee report. Any questions? See none. All those in favor signify by saying yes.
Yes.
Yes. Oppose, say no. That carries unanimously. We are now under deferrals and withdrawals. Counselors, are there any deferrals or withdrawals at this time? Counsel Bennett.
Thank you, Mr. President. In the matter of O-32, which is the subject to voter approval imposing a municipal gasoline tax, I move deferral until February 5th.
We have a motion and a second to defer O-32 until February the 5th. Any questions? See none. All those in favor signify by saying yes.
Yes.
Yes. Oppose, say no. That passes unanimously. Counsel Winter.
Thank you, Mr. President. This is Item B, O-55. I'll move a deferral until February 21st. This is prohibiting elected official departments, advisory groups of the city of Albuquerque from organizing, sponsoring, advertising, hosting political forums.
We have a motion and a second to defer Item O-55 until February the 21st. Any questions? See none. All those in favor signify by saying yes.
Yes.
Yes. Oppose, say no. That passes unanimously. We are now under the Consent Agenda, Item Nine. Are there any changes to the Consent Agenda? Counsel Harris.
I move approval of the Consent Agenda.
We have a motion and a second to approve the Consent Agenda. Any questions? All those in favor signify by saying yes.
Yes.
Yes. Oppose. That carries, that passes unanimously. We are now under General Public Comments. There will be a two-minute time limit. The light at the podium will be green for the first minute and a half, then the bell will ring and the light will turn yellow, indicating you have 30 seconds remaining. When the light turns red, that means your time has expired. I will call the first four speakers up, and once your name has been called, please come to the front. There is seating available for you. And if I mispronounce your name or butcher your name, I apologize now. First speaker is Don Schrader, followed by Kay Boukenna, followed by Lanter Dan Senna and Rudolph Serrano. Welcome.
The prophet Martin Luther King Jr. damned the Vietnam War in his most controversial speech on April 4th, 1967, exactly one year before he was assassinated. King damned the US mass murder of Vietnamese people. King said, quote, "The greatest purveyor of violence in the world today is my own government." The New York Times, the Washington Post, many newspapers nationwide condemned his strong message of truth. Many whites, many blacks, the White House, even most of King's inner circle of black leaders condemned his strong message of truth. He suffered much hatred, many death threats. Why is that speech far less known, far less honored than his "I have a dream" speech? Sadly, most King's celebrations today castrate his message. Sadly, most King's celebrations do not emphasize his strong stand against nuclear weapons, against the Vietnam War, against the evils of capitalism and the US empire. Martin Luther King Jr. was a prophet, not a rock star, not a politician. He refused to silence his conscience. He refused to sell out his convictions to get the popular support of millions and the approval of the powerful.
Thank you. Kay Boukenna, please hold your applause.
Good morning, Mr. President and members of the City Council. My name is Kay. I'm the Executive Director of the New Mexico Asian Family Center. I want to thank Counselors Davis and Peña for sponsoring Resolution 18-7, declaring Albuquerque an immigrant-friendly city with specific commitments to how our families will be protected. So we've heard our communities described in so many ways lately, from our richness in culture and language and religion, to unfortunately so many negative descriptions, and we're being betrayed in so many ways that are painful and very harmful to our communities. Although we have heard all these things before throughout history, it's crushing to hear them spoken by the President of the United States and echoed by others in leadership who consider it a justified norm for how they treat our communities. Things such as the Chinese are taking jobs away from hard-working Americans, they're spies, Muslims are terrorists, and of course, most recently, how some of our countries are described, as I don't want to repeat it, but again, such a horrible way. So these false accusations are painful, and they're so untrue. Under this national administration, we've seen a decline of Asian immigrants coming forward to services our agency, mostly out of fear, many of whom are women escaping abusive integrating situations, who are brought over as cleaners, as forced into sexual services, and who are denied so many of their rights by their abusers in order to keep them isolated. So we have stories of our Muslim women being harassed on public transit, our families shamed for not speaking English in a way that's technical enough to access basic resources and services, and heard so many stories of our children being likened to criminals. It is crucial for our local governments, for our beloved city of Albuquerque, to stand firmly with all of our communities and to stand for something we know to be true, that we belong, that we should all have equity and access to opportunity, and that we deserve safety and respect.
Thank you.
So please, support that resolution. Thank you.
Thank you. Your time is expired. Thank you. Again, you need to please hold your applause.
Security.
Lan Senna, welcome.
Thank you, Mr. President and members of the council. My name is Lan Senna from the Asian American Caucus. I am a second-generation immigrant, born and raised in our beautiful city, a city that my parents once could not pronounce. My mother escaped a war-torn nation on a small boat, seeking freedom and risking capture from pirates and from her own nation. She came across an American aircraft carrier without thinking she threw herself, her nieces and nephews in each arm, onto the net that sailors casted down. She arrived to the refugee camp without knowing a word of English. She did not know where she was going, but knew wherever she was going would be home. Albuquerque welcomed her, a refugee, in 1976 with open arms. My mother made Albuquerque her home because her family was here, but also her heart. They say home is where the heart is, but when your heart, your city, begins to be filled with hate, discrimination, and the intent to break up families, it can no longer be a part of your heart. Dr. Bob Morehead once said, "We split the atom, but not our prejudices." We must strive to be the city that the proclamation you all accepted today in honoring Dr. Martin Luther King, where equality is for all. With that, I hope the City Council supports R-18-7. Thank you.
Thank you. Rudolph Serrano, again, please hold your applause.
Happy 2018, Counselor, Counselor, and all Counselors. Congratulations to our new mayor. I hope it's the best of years for this administration. Finally, we have a mayor out of the work of this council, a democratic process. Human rights and civil rights are heading down to the end. You know, this is my last document, pretty much. Not only I don't have any more rights and representation in federal court, but I cannot file anymore. That means that you won't even know when I go to a mental facility and I stay there. I cannot even fight for that. And that's, I'm by myself. I'm the first one. And what happens to a minority of one is going to happen to a minority of many. So that's where we're heading. So I want to address these issues because we have a lot of these groups, you know, and that's where it's heading, you know, and we have to get up and stand up. I say last year, I'm running for governor, and if I can run for 2020, I will, and I'm still doing there. I just need three votes and $3 from each one of you, and I can take that racist pig out of government. But, you know, I have an action. That's the only thing that stops me, you know. So we cannot be acting against a racist pig when we are acting like one, you know. So let's stand up, you know. Let's get up and let's do it, you know. But I do want your support, you know, and I want you to, you know, get over it. Well, new major, new pet project, you know, we have to work in a big 500-room casino to keep money for our economy. There's no way. I did the math. You guys won't survive. A government that's going to cut all the funds for you for making this policy against, you know, being immigrant-friendly is going to cut our neck. So just think about it. We need a casino, 500 rooms, and we produce the money from your pensions.
Thank you. Your time is up. Next speaker, next four speakers will be Fred Hodeck, Guy DeSherry, Abel Diaz, and Connie Hune. Again, once your name has been called, please come to the front. There is seating available for you.
Thank you, Mr. President, Counselors. My name is Fred Hodeck, and I live in Brad Winters District. I'm the chairman of the Central Group of the Rio Grande Chapter of the Sierra Club. I'm here to express both my support and that of the Sierra Club for Counselor Gibson's Resolution R-18-5 that bans the coyote killing contest in Albuquerque and recommends to the state legislature that they adopt a similar law. We believe that the vast majority of New Mexicans do not approve of the killing contest and that the indiscriminate mass killing of coyotes is not an ethical hunting practice. A week ago Friday, I held a Open Sierra Club membership meeting. The topic of the discussion was living with coyotes and other wildlife creatures in an urban environment. Our speaker was Bill Pentner, who is the Resource Management and Visitor Center Supervisor for the Open Space Division. All 30 of the attendees of that meeting were there to learn about how we can coexist with the beautiful animals, the coyotes. People don't want to destroy the coyotes. They simply want to enjoy seeing them and having them around. Just this last Saturday, while hiking in the Bosque near the river behind the Bosque School, my two grandsons, age four and seven, managed to see a coyote on the trail right down by the river. They were just enthralled. And I think that it is such a thing, and I think as this resolution goes through the process, you'll be hearing more about why it's important to not have the killing contest. If the city were to approve this resolution, it would certainly send a good, important message to the roundhouse during the legislation process. We applaud Counsel- We applaud Consular Gibson for presenting this resolution, and I thank you.
Counselor Jones.
Thank you, Mr. President. I don't have a question of you. I just want to make sure that the people watching at home and the people in the audience understand that killing of coyotes is not legal in the city of Albuquerque today. It is not legal. I think that Consular Gibson's legislation is simply urging the state to ban. So lest anybody think that we are killing coyotes in the city of Albuquerque, that is not happening. It is not allowed. It is illegal, as is the firing of firearms in the city of Albuquerque. So I think we pretty much had that taken care of. But thank you, sir, for appearing before us.
Ms. Hodeck, thank you. Guy DeSherry, welcome.
Thank you. Mr. President and Councilors, my name is Guy DeSherry. I'm a volunteer attorney with Wildlife Conservation Advocacy Southwest, a small nonprofit in Valentin County. I'm also asking for your support for Resolution R 18-5, which would oppose coyote killing contests and indicates support for any statewide legislative ban on them. Coyote killing contests are very different than licensed, regulated hunting. There are no bag limits for coyotes. There's no season limits on coyotes. That's why they select them, to be the targets in these contests. The contestants go around, they set up stands about every 15 to 20 minutes, and a stand is where they set up an electronic caller that's remote-controlled. That makes an animal distress sound. That brings the coyotes in. They shoot them. They shoot until they're down. The tactic is to shoot as many times as you need to, so you're not really saving anything of the animal. You're not going to eat it. There's not going to be any usable fur. Contests that are organized in Albuquerque means that those contestants are going to be out in all the surrounding counties, in all the public lands, just to pile up enough carcasses to win a prize. So there's been two bills to ban these things that made it through the New Mexico Senate, one in 2015 and one in 2017. There was substantial bipartisan support for both of those bills from legislators whose districts include precincts within the city of Albuquerque. So thank you for taking up this resolution. Thank you, Counselors Gibson and Borrego, for cosponsoring it.
Thank you. Mr. Diaz, welcome.
Hi. My name is Sabiel Diaz. I'm original from Chihuahua, Mexico, but I live in Albuquerque for the last seven years. I pastor in Chihuahua, Gracia for the last year. Two weeks ago, a member of our church, a friend, a person who loves Jesus, he was detained. He was stopping by the police. He was stopping, and he was thinking it was the police. They asked him to stop the car. They asked him to get out of the car. And they started telling him that he was there with washing him, and he saw the jacket and was ice. Immigration. In that moment, he was not dead, but in that moment, he felt he was dead because he know. And that afternoon, he's not going to see his daughter. He's not going to see his wife. And in that moment, in that moment, a wife loved his husband, a daughter loved his father, and a friend loved his friend. I feel like he felt like he went away. But, you know, a detention, when they detain an immigrant, not only affect a family, but a community. A community that we working hard to provide Albuquerque with a place where our kids is growing up, and can grow up in faith, in family, in community, in love, in peace, in unity. My friend, he's in detention center in Chaparral, and it's look, I went and saw him. It's affected me, it's affected, it's affecting to see the circumstances he has right now. But if you passing this Resolution R 18-7, to prevent families, to protect that families they need, to protect everyone, to protect the people, to protect kids, until we can see Albuquerque and our kids, they can grow in a family and community. Thank you so much, and God bless you.
Thank you.
Hi, Mr. President and Councilors. My name is Connie Nguyen, and I am here to ask you to support Resolution 18-7 for an immigrant-friendly city. I am a child of immigrants, and I know that my parents contribute to society and work hard, but they also face discrimination. And I know this still happens. We see it all the time, especially in the news and how things are going right now. And I just think that it's wrong that people are treated as second-class citizens. And I think that by passing this resolution, supporting it, it'll help contribute to creating a safer environment so that families don't fear being split up and that people just have a place where they can grow. And I think it'll also create a strong community for all of us because people won't be afraid to seek out their rights, and people will be able to grow. So, thank you.
Thank you. Next four speakers are Robert Nelson, Robert Woodruff, Barbara Grothas, Christopher Smith. Go ahead and come on down and be prepared to speak. Welcome.
Thank you, and good evening, Councilor President Sanchez and Council. My name is Robert Nelson, and I'm a Filipino-American, and just last summer, became a naturalized American citizen. Asian immigrants in New Mexico make up 12% of New Mexico's workforce, accounting for over 100,000 workers. And Asian immigrants are the fastest-growing population in New Mexico since 2010. We are homeowners. We are business owners. We teach our children. We take care of our sick, and we are vital parts of this economy and this community. I'm here tonight as the President of the Asian American Association of New Mexico and encourage Council to support Resolution R-18-7, which is not on the agenda tonight, and is a resolution designed to strengthen Albuquerque's status as an immigrant-friendly city. Thank you so much for the opportunity to speak, and good night.
Thank you, Mr. Nelson. Robert Woodruff, welcome.
Thank you. Good evening, President Sanchez and Councilors. I'm Reverend Robert, Reverend Dr. Robert Woodruff, pastor at Second Presbyterian Church, Lomas in Edith and Martinez Town. Thank you for listening to these brief remarks in support of Albuquerque enhancing its immigrant-friendly policies. Second Pres has a bilingual Spanish-English worship, and our congregation of 250 is multicultural. We're involved in community outreach and recently hosted an asylee from the Democratic Republic of Congo. Though I, of course, do not speak for all Presbyterians, I'm well aware of the efforts of many congregations in the city and our regional body called the Presbytery to help vulnerable immigrants with or without documentation. This evening, I appeal to you for support of R 18-7 to help ensure that we do not burn precious resources to enforce federal immigration laws, safeguard personal information so families won't be targeted, limit ICE's access to non-public city facilities without a warrant, and keep the city from enforcing any kind of federal lists based on religion, ethnicity, or natural origin. Albuquerque and New Mexico, for that matter, is known for its diversity. It's one of our greatest assets. It draws tourists. It shapes the ethos of our city, and it gives our community texture and depth. We know many undocumented families are part of this community. They pay into Social Security. They establish stable, constructive lives, and they contribute to the well-being of our city. They're part of a greater whole that is Albuquerque. We are true to our city's identity, and we are at best when our policy does not sow fear and suspicion, break up families, or break the golden rule. Scripture unequivocally teaches that foreigners are to be treated with hospitality and respect, and even makes hospitality a civic responsibility. In light of recent national attempts to dehumanize immigrants and use DACA recipients as negotiation pieces, it is paramount. Thank you.
Thank you. Appreciate your time. Barbara Grothas, followed by Christopher Smith.
Do we turn this on? My name is Barbara Grothas. President Sanchez and Councilors, it's lovely to see you all here again. We are out here keeping an eye on you. Just so you know, we'd like to find out and maintain that we have some real Democrats up here, six of you by our count, whether it is supposed to be part of our, the way we run our elections or not, in a nonpartisan way. We recognize that you all are acting in partisan ways, and we would like to make sure that you're exercising your humanity, that you are demonstrating that you're actually a human being, and that you are going to act on behalf of the human beings in our city and all the other creatures and the environment around us. And so we're here to remind you that we're watching you, and we thank you for the opportunity to do so. We will be keeping an eye on you. Thank you.
Thank you. Christopher Smith, Jessica Rodriguez.
President Sanchez, members of the Council, thank you for the opportunity to provide public comment. My name is Christopher Smith. I'm here on behalf of Wild Earth Guardians. We're an environmental advocacy group founded here in New Mexico. We have over 1,300 members and supporters here in Albuquerque and thousands more across the state. I'm here to encourage you to adopt the Resolution opposing coyote-killing contests, that's R 18-5, and especially commend the message to our state leaders to pass a statewide ban on this activity. There's no scientific or economic basis for these contests, and I'm happy to share scientific resources to back that up if you're interested. But today, I wanted to pose the question, what impact do these formalized blood sports have on our society's general attitude about our relationship with the natural world? And I hope you'll agree that it's a negative one, and I hope that in passing this resolution, or sorry, adopting this resolution, you're making a positive impact. So thank you for your time.
Thank you. Jessica Rodriguez, David Padrel, and Brenda McKenna.
City Council, I asked for additional time so I could interpret it for Jessica.
That'll be fine.
Mi nombre es Jessica Rodriguez. Soy la orgullosa madre de dos niñas y dueña de una pequeña empresa. Soy miembro activo del Centro de Igualdad y Derechos. Después de que Trump llegó a la Casa Blanca con su agenda anti-inmigrante, nuestras comunidades han experimentado un aumento del racismo y la discriminación. Como resultado del ambiente hostil anti-inmigrante, mi familia fue directamente impactada por una deportación. En esta injusticia nos afectó mucho. Las amenazas planteadas por la administración Trump han dejado a mis hijas como a otros niños con mucha incertidumbre y miedo. Por ejemplo, mi hija de nueve años actualmente recibe terapia para enfrentar el trauma causado por, ah, perdón, el trauma causado al experimentar la deportación de un miembro de la familia. Hasta la fecha, mi hija tiene problemas para dormir sola por la noche y tiene ansiedad de separación. Mis hijas han llegado a temer a los funcionarios encargados de hacer cumplir la ley porque están al tanto de casos pasados en la que la policía ha colaborado con ICE. Mis hijas, al igual que todos los niños, merecen una infancia normal sin temor a separarse de sus padres. Debido a esto, les pido a los consejeros de la ciudad que apoyen esta ordenanza, la cual traerá algo de alivio a nuestros niños y nuestra comunidad. Nos sentimos muy afortunados de vivir en Albuquerque, una ciudad que ha abierto su corazón a las familias de inmigrantes y refugiados. Los inmigrantes, como todos los alburkequeños, trabajamos arduamente para el bienestar de nuestras familias y comunidades. Contribuimos de innumerables maneras y tratamos de construir comunidades donde la justicia y la igualdad prevalezca para todos. No podemos normalizar la deportación de nuestras comunidades. Instamos a nuestros funcionarios que apoyen la resolución que fortalecerá Albuquerque como una ciudad amigable para inmigrantes.
My name is Jessica Rodriguez. I am a proud mother of two girls and owner of a small company. I am an active member of El Centro de Igualdad y Derechos. After Trump took office with the anti-immigrant agenda, our communities have experienced an experience the increase in racism and discrimination as a result of the hostile anti-immigrant environment. My family was directly...
Mr. Tad Naminski, would you please keep your comments to yourself? Thank you. Go ahead and proceed.
Impacted by a deportation. This injustice affected us a lot. The threats posed by the Trump administration have left my daughter, like other children, with much uncertainty and fear. For example, my nine-year-old daughter has currently received therapy to cope with the trauma caused by experiencing a deportation of our family members. To this day, my daughter struggles with sleep, sleeping alone at night, and has separation anxiety. My daughter has grown to fear law enforcement officers because they have, in the past tense, seen what law enforcement cooperating with ICE. My daughters, as well as other children, deserve to have normal childhood without fearing being separated from their parents. Because of this, we ask the City Council officials to support the resolution, which will bring some relief to our children and our communities. We feel very fortunate to live in Albuquerque City that has opened its hearts to immigrant refugee families and immigrants. Like the Albuquerqueans, work very hard and are aware of our family communities. We contribute to...
Ma'am, the time is expired, so I apologize.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker, David Padrel, followed by Brenda McKenna. Welcome, Mr. Padrel.
First of all, Mr. President, City Councilors, Happy New Year. Second of all, I hope she's got some information.
Mr. Padrel, go ahead and start while the hand, the documents out. Thank you.
And again, I'd like to thank you and for all you've done with people, helping people. As you'll see, there's been a progress where we've served over 1,000 kids, working with APD and working with the Fire Department and all of our special activities. And now we're beginning to go to another phase. The Average Caesar Chavez Project that you're seeing there tells what we're going to be doing in all the departments. I would like to, I'm going to like to meet with the Chief of Police and Family Community Services, where we have just a few problems we need to iron out. But other than that, the program's being real good, the Fire Department, and we're going to meet, I'm going to meet with them and the chief to see what we'll be doing this summer and inviting all of you to participate with kids to grasp this level of our community and some of our lunch program. We're going to have lunch at Roosevelt Park with all the kids from your districts. Your districts have provided kids from all of your districts, and working with them has been truly, truly a task to deal with. And again, I want to thank you, and I want to go on, hopefully, with your support for us to be able to do this. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Padrel. Brenda McKenna, welcome.
Good evening, President Sanchez and Councilors. I wish to publicly recognize and thank Counselors Gibson and Borrego and their staffs for sponsoring Legislation R 18-5 condemning animal abuse in the form of killing contests, coyote-killing contests, that is. I understand the bill is included in today's letter of introduction. I respectfully ask this body to support this legislation as it moves through to the Finance and Government Operations Committee. You all will probably get really tired of seeing me at the upcoming meetings, but my presence is simply because it reflects my admiration for the legislation and since 2012, my mission to see the day that New Mexico finally condemns and outlaws these shameful slaughtering events on our wildlife. Thank you very much for your attention and time.
Thank you. Next speaker is Mariah Mendez Serra, followed by Myrna Lascano, followed by Israel Chavez, followed by Krista Diou. Again, once your name has been called, please come to the front and be prepared to speak. Mariah Mendez, welcome.
Good afternoon, City Councilors. My name is Marian Mendez Serra, and I am a proud New Mexican, Daca beneficiary and community organizer with El Centro de Igualdad y Derechos, which is an immigrant rights and workers justice organization based in Albuquerque, New Mexico. We have over 4,500 members, a majority of whom are low witch workers. I'm proud that we are here with dozens of others who support Resolution 18-7 to strengthen Albuquerque's status as immigrant-friendly city, and I would like you all to please stand up if you came in favor of this resolution.
Ma'am, that is not allowed. Thank you.
So since day one, the Trump administration has aimed to separate immigrant families by expanding an already massive deportation machine, dumping millions of dollars in for-profit detention centers, turning away and stripping... turning away and stripping protections of those fleeing violence, abjutant poverty rumpel on the Constitution and targeting Muslim communities. President Trump has threatened mass deportation, and the administration is trying to threaten and coerce local, local governments into putting into motion his deportation machine, but constraints on federal resources will limit some of the damage his administration can inflict in Albuquerque families. If Albuquerque refuses to act as arms of ICE by passing this resolution, then it is less likely that ICE will have the resources to fully carry out Trump's expensive and terrifying ambition. Today, we're here to say, "Javasta, enough is enough. We should be protecting our communities." We thank co-sponsor Penya and Davis and urge the city council to support this resolution to strengthen Albuquerque's status as an immigrant-friendly. Together, we can make Albuquerque a city in which our children wake up every morning knowing that their parents will be there when they return from a hard day of work. We can ensure that we live in a city that says "Javasta" when immigrants, refugees, and Muslims are being attacked. Thank you.
Thank you. Myrna Lascano, followed by Israel Chavez. Welcome.
I ask for additional time from the city council to...
That'll be fine. Go ahead and proceed.
Buenas noches. Mi nombre es Myrna Lascano. Soy miembro de, del Centro de Igualdad y Derecho. Soy madre de cuatro hijas y estudiante de Encuentro Nuevo México. Mi esposo y yo emigramos a Albuquerque hace 12 años porque ya no pudimos alimentar a nuestra familia en México. En un futuro cercano, aspiro a abrir una guardería que brinde oportunidades de empleo en mi comunidad. Sin embargo, para hacer eso necesitamos políticas que protejan a nuestras familias inmigrantes. Mi deseo para 2018 es que los inmigrantes tengamos los mismos derechos y protecciones que todos los demás. Las familias trabajadoras inmigrantes estamos aquí para luchar por nuestras familias y nuestras comunidades. Mientras nuestro movimiento lucha por una ley de Clean Dream Act para el 19 de enero, localmente, nos estamos asegurando de que nuestras comunidades tengan políticas para, para proteger a nuestras familias. Queridos concejales de la ciudad, para aquellos de ustedes que son padres, abuelos, hijos, hijas, hermanos, les hablo como madre. Nosotros como padres inmigrantes necesitamos estar seguros de que dejan, de que dejemos a nuestros hijos en las escuelas. Podemos recogerlos más tarde. Nuestras familias merecen la seguridad de que no serán deportados ni separados. Solo pensar que todos los días corren el riesgo de no volverlos a ver a mis hijos me causa un gran dolor en el corazón. Nuestros niños merecen saber que podemos cuidarlos y protegerlos todos los días sin temor a que sus propios padres sean deportados. Debido a esto, insisto en que apoyen una resolución para hacer que Albuquerque sea una, sea más segura para todos. Gracias.
My name is Irma Rascano. I am a mother for a member of El Centro de Igualdad y Derechos and a student, a student with Encuentro, New Mexico. My husband and I came to Albuquerque 12 years ago because we were no longer able to feed our family back in Mexico. In the near future, I aspire to open a daycare which would provide employment opportunities in the community. However, in order to do that, we need policies that would protect our immigrant families. My wish for 2018 is, is that we immigrants have the same rights and protections as everyone else. With immigrant working families, we, we are here to fight for our families and our communities. While our movement fights for a Clean Dream Act by January 19th locally, we are ensuring that our communities and our policies protect our families. Dear city council, for those of you who are parents, grandparents, daughters, sons, siblings, we ask you to, as a mother, we, we immigrant parents need to ensure that we are able to drop off our childrens at their schools and we are able to pick them, pick them up in the afternoons. Our families deserve the insurance that we, we will be able to pick them up after schools. Just think that every day I run the risk of not seeing my children again, causing me great pain in my heart. Our children deserve to know that we will be able to take care of them and protect them every day without fearing that their parents won't be able to pick them up and will be deported. So, thank you.
Next speaker is Israel Chavez, followed by Chris Adio, followed by Tad Naminsky. Israel Chavez is not here. Chris Adio, welcome.
Good evening, council, council president, city council. I'd like to say to Council Davis and Council Penya on the immigrant-friendly city to continue great work there. I think we need to keep that, keep Albuquerque immigrant-friendly. Also, on the conversation on the housing, I like some of the stuff that was discussed earlier on trying to make it so that family can't stay in their house if it's possible and not demolition. If it just needs repairs, maybe it could be helped for homeless. So, that's a great thing. The other thing is on the eight, on the Police Oversight Board, the reappointment of Leonard Waits and Johnny Armijo. I met them. They're great people. Strongly recommend reappointment. I also put in for the POB, for the Police Oversight Board, talking to council staff. I was told I was not selected, but I will continue to try, and I will put a new resume every time they have a opening and hope to be on the board for the POB. I attended the last POB the last week, and one of the things that was mentioned at the POB was it was the first time they had someone from the mayor's office to be there. So, that was a great job for the mayor's office. Thank you very much for the mayor's office to have someone there. Last thing, or not last thing, but also the pedestrian safety ordinance. I'm glad to see the ACIU has filed a lawsuit against the city. I still don't agree with the pedestrian lawsuit. The Albuquerque Journal did recognize that there's eight councils that did vote for it, and we'll see what happens to that. And I also have a dream, and I have a dream that in 2019 that the city council will have a military veteran in the city council. Thank you for your time. It's been a pleasure to be here tonight.
Thank you, Mr. Adio, for your time and for your service. Next speaker, Tad Naminsky, followed by Claudia Medina, and the last speaker will be Marco Nunez.
My name is Tad Naminsky. Well, let me begin with Farming in Barelas by Isaac Benton. Show me where is this farm, Isaac Benton. Show the people in Albuquerque where this farm. No, you won't show. How about Filipino farm in Grants last year by Trudy Jones? That's right, in Grants. Now, that's what City of Albuquerque go, "Well, here is another look of money." I'm sick and tired. Yes, I am for immigration, illegal immigration. Come here legally. You learned English language after 12 years. Don't even, well, where this money goes? They're sending to Mexico every payday. Our jobs were taken away. We don't have rights to work in this damn state. Well, let's, let's go brush it someplace at Rat at, on the 11th floor. Alan Haramillo, Rat. He was served for the, for, he was a Republican. Now he's Democrat. Was a coward. Sneak, oh, sneak. Mexican, sneak. Call me racist. Well, let's go farther. A black, a black are discriminated. Look at all these basketball players, football players, millionaires. Black, well, how about a proven free? Well, we have, we don't have rights right here in this state. I ran up judges already at Metro Court, Silbo Division, 16. I'm running up judges...
Your time has expired.
Criminal division. It violated my rights with a jury.
Your time has expired. Thank you.
And you, Mexican, too.
This is your first warning? Next speaker, Claudia Medina.
President Sanchez, city councilors, my name is Claudia Medina. I'm the executive director of Enlace Comunitario. Enlace is an immigrant-based organization that provides services to victims of domestic violence and also works to prevent domestic violence in Albuquerque. During more than 25 years working in this field, I have seen many immigrant victims that are afraid to call the police or to go to court for fear of deportation. Now, with the increased hostility against immigrants, especially after President Trump's election, ICE has had more of a presence in our neighborhoods, in our workplaces, in court, in the streets. And more and more immigrant victims are very reluctant to complain about their abuse, about reporting to the police. So, I am here in support of R-187 because it would provide an additional layer of safety for immigrant victims of domestic violence and for us immigrants in general who would feel more welcome and would feel that we have more support of our community. I just want to end by just reading a report that was done by the National Alliance to End Sexual Assault and Domestic Violence that just came about and said that 78% of advocates reported that immigrant survivors expressed concerns about contacting the police. Three in four service providers reported that immigrant survivors had concerns about going to court.
Ms. Medina, thank you, but your time has expired.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Marco Nunez.
And thank you to the Councilor Davis and Councilor Penya.
Thank you. Marco Nunez, welcome.
President Sanchez, councilors, good evening. My name is Marco Nunez. I'm here to speak on behalf of Compañera Andrea Plaza, the executive director of Encuentro. She wasn't able to join us this evening last minute. Encuentro's mission is to transform New Mexico into a thriving community for all its residents, and they do this by engaging Latino immigrant families in educational, career development opportunities, and build skills for economic and social justice. As a community member devoted to ensuring economic health and well-being of the city, we share an increasing concern for the continued safety of immigrant families and business owners. We're living in an era in which the Trump administration is targeting the very workers, small business owners that play a vital role in the economic solvency of our city. Targeting immigrant families is not only immoral, it's not sound economic policy. Over the last five years, Encuentro's participated in city-led efforts to support our immigrant entrepreneurial community through initiatives such as Living Cities and the Molino Project. Immigrant businesses have created jobs. They've generated millions of dollars in local tax revenue and revitalized many of our city's business corridors. They're essential to our public safety, and their collaboration with local law enforcement supports community policing efforts that keep our neighborhoods and business districts safe and accessible. Immigrants are twice as likely to start a business as US-born citizens, and immigrant-owned businesses generate approximately $386 million in economic activity. As the coordinator for the Work of Justice Project for El Centro, I'd just like to add that this proposed ordinance sends a, a really important message to the community of immigrant workers throughout the city who fall victim to labor abuses such as wage theft and discrimination. I think this ordinance will allow a spotlight to be shined instead of on immigrants, to be shone on unscrupulous employers that might take advantage of such workers. So, we urge you to support this initiative, and we appreciate your time.
Thank you. That was the last speaker under general public comments. We are now on item 11, which is announcements. Councilor Penya.
Thank you, Mr. President. There will be, there will be an Albuquerque-Bernardale County Water Utility Authority meeting Wednesday, January 24th at 5:00 PM in the Vincent Y. Chambers.
Thank you, Councilor Penya. We are now under item 12, which is public hearings, and this is AC 17-15. Bob Kernan, Agent for Yava Enterprises Incorporated, appeals the decision of the Development Review Board. This matter has been withdrawn by the applicant. I make a motion to accept the withdrawal. We have a motion any second. Any questions? See none of those in favor, signify by saying yes. Yes, opposed, say no. That carries unanimously, and we will be taking a 30-minute dinner break.